All righty, now that we had all the chaos down, can we get a drink of water? We're ready to start. We're gonna call the regular city council meeting of the city of Cherokee Village, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. If you would care to stand with me and recite your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll recognize a moment of silence, please. Ms. Clerk, roll call, please.
Harrison.
Here.
Rachel Tatum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Smith. Ishmael. Jeff Tatum. Pam Roland.
Here.
Mayor, Clerks, and Attorney in present.
Thank you. Had a chance to look at the agenda for tonight, and entertain a motion to accept.
Mayor, I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to add the phoning in from our alderman.
Okay.
And with that, I'd like to accept our agenda as presented.
Peter, can you repeat that?
I'd like to, with that addition, I'd like to, oh, I'd like to accept the agenda as presented.
And then you're being...
What do we add?
With the addition, with the addition of...
I wanna speak about council members phoning in. Because there's no law or no statement about that being...
Now, Peter, I will just say that I wasn't gonna come at all tonight, 'cause I'm sick, but Heather said y'all didn't have a quorum, so I said I could do phone.
The, I, I'm just gonna make basically a statement, and then I'll be going.
Okay.
We have a motion to accept tonight's agenda with the addition of new business number five being phoning in of council members to county, city council meetings. You got a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, uh, motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Ms. Tatum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. All righty, any public comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, is the, had a minute, a little bit to look over the minutes of the August fifteenth meeting. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Octo, August fifteenth. Boy, I was rushing this year along. August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Ms. Tatum to approve the minutes of the August fifteenth meeting, seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Harrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Moving to correspondence, we had a, we actually have a couple correspondence, is this... You got them, Ms. Clerk? Okay. You got, you got them where you can read them?
The first one is from the Sharp County Senior Life Center, just thanking us for fixing their air conditioning. The second one is from Carol Jones. It says, "To Angela, thank you so much for your wonderful assistance, your positive and reassu- reassurance you have helped me. You are kind and pleasant to talk to and very helpful."
And I actually have a, I have another one that come in today. I'll get you a copy of it, Ms. Penny. It's from the, uh, from Matt Mateo. Is that how they say his last name, the, the website designer?
I think so.
Uh, Mr. Matt and Penny and Misty up front worked really hard on the new city website for quite a while, and he sent an email today. Says, "Dear Mayor and council members, I just wanted to drop a line of congratulations to you regarding the outstanding performance of Penny and Misty. Being the webmaster for chirkeevillage.org has been so wonderful. Months, months ago, we were given a huge task of updating and redesigning the webstate, website since it was dormant for such a long time. We were left with not many passwords and information that we needed. It has made my job much better working with both Penny and Misty because they did a lot of the hard work, both at home and at home some, or at work and home sometimes. They really deserve a lot of praise and, and a raise for such dedication. We still have more work to do. I am positive it will go much smoother knowing these ladies are working with me. Thank you, Mayor and council members." Uh, Matt, from the webmaster, so I'll give that ten over here. I apologize for moving into the fall season, we got the ragweed going, and my allergies are working overtime today. All righty. Had a minute to look over the financials. I will say the, we are so far still, so far, we're still trending somewhat above expected, so we're still, the financials are still, we're still good on that. We're try, uh, at the last budget meeting was, uh, we were about, Mr. Paul, am I right saying, you said we're expected to come in about sixteen percent above projections, but we're maintaining underspending? Yes, Steve?
Um, I did confirm earlier this month with, uh, Misty that the check we're anticipating, uh, in terms of available grant money to help offset the cost over in the senior center of replacing the large unit over there, uh, just under four thousand dollars was indeed received.
It was?
Yes, sir.
It was very, very well, very grateful. We can move on into the mayor's report. Said you got, you're gonna have to listen to me for two pages today. But it's big words. "September twenty twenty-four marriage report. The last month has been busy with planning for next year. The department heads have been putting together information to present for the budget, for the budget next year. The city is still on track with sales tax collection and street turnback monies for the year. The last couple months have shown a slight downturn in what we have been collecting, but we're still on track for what we budgeted for. I want to remind everyone that the recent, recent purchases of a new fire apparatus and police vehicles and the work done at Tohigh Trail, the improvements done at City Hall with the lighting, the phones, computer, and we hope to get some new computers, were all made with Federal CARES Act and ARPA monies for, for which we are very grateful to have received. The parking lot at City Hall is back open. It has been repaired and striped where the construction company had work, had worked, done work. The highway project is still being worked on. They are building the roadway up to match the new bridge profile. The sides of the roadway will have a sidewalk with railing when finished. I spoke with the R.D. engineer this week about when to expect the road to be reopened for normal traffic flow. He stated that West Plains Bridge and Grading Company had thirty days added back to the contract because of delays that have, that has happened beyond their control. The expected date to reopen the bridge to normal traffic flow is October tenth. At this time, they're working on a small, the, on the work you say on the upstream side, they're working on a small dam for the upstream side to allow for a pool of water to be at the botanical garden area. I hope that with all the work moving the utilities with the current project, that the southern bridge, which is the bridge in front of the old gas station, that the southern bridge to be, that's to be replaced next year, will not take as long as, be as long as a project and the traffic will not be inconvenienced as long. Our street crew has been busy cutting back overgrowth on roads and putting out coal patch. This last batch that was mated to plug mill yielded around six hundred and fifty tons, to which we had made around four hundred and fifty tons earlier this year, which has already been put out. I'm also, uh, I'm appointing Mr. Jeff Scott to fill the vacancy on the Airport Commission. He has an extensive background in aviation, ranging from electronics, airframe, power plant, and he holds an inspector's authorization. The Airport Commission wants to start a EAA chapter, which is Experimental Aircraft Association. He has served on a similar organization and would be very knowledgeable in getting one started here. As everybody has seen, the digital sign out front of City Hall, as every, as everyone knows, has not been working correctly for a while. We have had the repair company come look at it a couple times. They have said the motherboard is out, which controls the LEDs, and it cannot be repaired. The sign in its current location will be hard to see after the new roadway is installed. The municipal insurance that we have said that they will no longer provide coverage for the sign because of it being broken, broken. I would like to have a plan to remove it and a later time replace it with a newer sign. The lighting for the flags is connected to the same power supply that powers the sign and will be disconnected when the sign is removed. The flags are SID property, so part of the planning will include them so the lighting for the flags is maintained. The grant for the senior citizens' air conditioning was received on, uh, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four in the amount of three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. I want to thank Councilmember Steve Thompson and State Representative District Two, Trey Steinwell, for making this possible to offset the total cost of replacing the air conditioning unit for the senior citizens soon. And that's it. Thank you all. Into the department reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a supplement to the minutes from the animal control meeting. Um, I've, we finally have a start date from the concrete, concrete, uh, company Curtis Construction.
Mm-hmm.
For this lab to commence on, uh, the week of October seventh. Item number one. Item number two, um, per one of the trustees today, Pat Sasseby, the funds have been released from the, uh, trust account that were held separately from city, uh, funds, and they're, that check is in the mail, so I don't know the exact time those will be received, uh, but those are intended to be deposited with the Valpor, uh, funds that were remaining, and so we're hopeful that that's gonna meet, uh, the current, uh, plans that are in place, and we have, uh, most of the estimates in place, and those have been reviewed by the trustees. And again, these are not city funds, these are donated funds.
All donated, yes.
So, we've made, we've kept the trustees apprised via email of the ongoing progress. I unfortunately was unable to attend, uh, the last animal control meeting, and so wanted to provide those updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Uh, open house this weekend at the animal control facility on two eighty-nine. What's the hours?
Uh, it's from nine to three on Saturday and twelve to three on Sunday.
Okay, nine to three on Saturday and twelve to three on Sunday. Sorry, my head stopped up and I can't hear. But, uh, if anybody wants to help out or make a donation, thank you for the work on the grant. Uh, it's very, very much appreciated. Pushing buttons. Mr. Fire Chief, Mr. Cal, anything on the fire department?
Um, not a whole lot. We, uh, on nine eleven, the fire department was with the police department. We were all asked to speak to the highland fifth grader during nine eleven. We all enjoyed it for a month or two, and they asked us a lot of questions. Uh, we got to educate a lot about, uh, what it takes to become an officer for a fireman. Uh, I'm trained in all, and a lot of the new process. Other than that, for the year of, uh, October's fire convention month, we've rolled up reservations, I guess you'd color it, for the three K at the highland school and kindergarten, also a few different days, about getting a new fire condition.
Yes. Yeah, I'm, thank you, Mr. Cal, I didn't have that in my, I was supposed to put that in my mayor's report, to remind everyone that Halloween will be observed here at the City Hall parking lot on October thirty-first. We're gonna have the trunk or treat in the City Hall parking lot, starting at five P.M. until seven P.M., where the candy runs out, so if anybody knows of anybody needing a destination for Halloween, we're gonna have a, hopefully a parking lot full of people and candy. Uh, police department, Mr. Police Chief, anything to add?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Thompson did the animal control committee. The airport, uh, they have completed the construction on the new hangars. It looks really nice out there. People, like I said, I, I probably mentioned this at most of my council meetings, we're very, we're very blessed to have such a, such a good asset in our area, in our small community, that airport out there is a great asset, and they're making some great improvements. So, anybody gets a chance, you can go out there and talk to them, and they'll be glad to show you what the, what, what's on the plans and what they've got built. The Tri-County Recycle Board, uh, still doing good, they're still soluble and, uh, they're staying above board, the new, uh, they hired a new manager. I was trying to think of what his, I can't think of what his name is, I'm good, no good with names, but he, he's doing a very good job. He's, uh, they're, they're doing a good job out there, so. All righty, old business. Remind everybody about the trunker, trunker treat at the City Hall parking lot, Thursday, October thirty-first, between five and seven, or as long as the candy lasts. Please, if it's a business or group or individuals, please get out, uh, get in contact with one of the ladies, Misty or Ms. Penny about getting set up, uh, we just requested, uh, to keep it kid-friendly and appropriate, it's all we request on our, hope everybody dresses up for the occasion, but keep it kid-friendly. So we can get into new business. Number one is the short-term special use permits, and we found a new, we can do this a new way according to, we talked to Mr. Jody, the city attorney, so it's, it's up to the council. We can approve them as a group.
We've done that before.
We have, but now we got legal opinion that says so.
Oh, I told you to do that, that was...
I know.
I make a motion that we approve all four permits.
Item, new business item number, yeah, item number, new business number one, items A through D.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Martin to approve new business number one, special, uh, short-term special use permits, uh, items A through D, seconded by Ms. Tatum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like signs. Just for everybody's clarification, the Oktoberfest fundraiser will be Thursday, September twenty-sixth, eight A.M. to ten P.M. at the Innovation Hub, which is just up the street by the post office. Uh, the Cherokee Village Fire Department will be holding their five K run, October nineteenth. Get ahold of Mr. Rob Smith, Councilmember Rob Smith, to get registered for that. The Elks Club will hold their Fall Pepper Martin Memorial Turkey Shoot at the Highland Elks Lodge, October fifth, at ten A.M. And the C.V. Lions Club's White Canes will be out October third, from six thirty A.M. to eight A.M. Just letting everybody what that is. New business number two is the two thou, or twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, which is a re- resolution to levy the ad valorem taxes for the counties of Sharp and Fulton, Arkansas, for the city of Cherokee Village. This is not any new taxes, it's not raising any taxes, it's merely, it, we have to vote on it every year at this time to authorize the counties to collect the taxes to be paid to the city, and that's all, that's all this is, it's, we're just voting on the, voting on it to be authorized, so we give the county the authorization to collect the taxes to be paid to the cities.
And we can do both of them at the same time, or the two separate?
No, it's one resolution.
One resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion, we pass that resolution?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson to pass Resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, a resolution to levy ad valorem taxes for the counties of Sharp and Fulton, Arkansas, for the city of Cherokee Village.
Can you announce what the mills are?
It's five.
Five mills?
Yes, it is five mills.
And we've been at that for years.
For years, it's the same, same as it's been for as long as I can remember.
Thank you.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The the next new business is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero two. It's an ordinance to specifically permitting Councilmember Heather Harrison of Cherokee Village, Arkansas, to conduct business with the city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas, and prescribing the extent of such authority and declaring it an emergency and for other purposes. Now, has, have we had, have you guys had time to read and study? On ordinance, we have to read the whole thing, don't we?
Well, I make a motion that this gets tabled until we need to use this ordinance.
I can use it at any, I mean, it could be used at any time.
It is. There, there's no reason, there's no reason to do it now.
Well, it'd be like when Mayor needed to do that for his tow truck business, and you making...
I'm sorry, but if I could, point of order there, the mayor requested a, a, uh, permission of council to put in place where, um, he would be allowed with other vendors to offer towing services within the community. It was not an exclusive contract granted for, and it's not a contract, the towing contract that the mayor, or, or the towing business that the mayor operates, uh, those services are provided directly to citizens of the community. At their discretion, they have other choices. This contract that's been in, in consideration for this ordinance would be an exclusive, uh, provision of services, and those services being provided directly to the city. Therefore, I believe the precedent has already been set within Sharp County and other counties throughout the state that, uh, an elected official, specifically going back to when the county jail was constructed, they had a member of the, um, county quorum court that wanted to participate in a contract for that project, and as such, he was offered the opportunity to either submit a contract or sub, uh, and if he did, submit his resignation to the quorum court, which he, or to simply remain a member of the quorum court. That was following issues within state statutes and guidelines, and so, uh, that member of the quorum court resigned from the quorum court in order to participate in a contract directly with the county. Um, I believe that, you know, what's being requested of this council follows that line rather than to be amongst a number of vendors that can offer towing services within the community. He just, that was a clearance to operate the business within the city, and when other citizens within the city are contracting him directly if they choose to, and there's other towing services, it's not, it's not a fair comparison, with all due respect.
Can the mayor tow city vehicles?
The, this dispatch, dispatches at an accident, they have a list of towers, and they will dispatch whoever's next on the list.
I understand that.
And that's why we granted him the ability, so if Cherokee Village police called and said, "I need a tow," and his name was next on the list, so he could go. That's how I understand
Yeah.
what we, what we basically passed. He's got his own business, he's doing that, anybody can call him and ask for a tow, but we didn't want it to look like he was trying to take over the business for the whole city.
Can't, what's... Do we even...
And there's no reason to pass this one.
Mr. Attorney, do we even, I don't know if we...
Just cut it off, we should listen.
No, that's all right, no, do we, I don't even know if we have enough, do we have enough to vote in ordinance?
Not, not if Ms. Harrison has to abstain from the vote, since it involves her directly.
Yeah, because Ms. Harrison has to, I don't even know if we have enough to vote.
Or you'd have to vote. You would be number five. But I mean, I, I...
Well, there's a motion on a table, there's a motion to table this
I would...
to a future date. That's the motion that's on the table.
That's a motion on the table, it is, yeah.
I would second that motion.
Uh...
And I, and I offer, I would like to offer some additional comment to, you know, for additional discussion, if it's permitted before we take a vote.
Sure.
If that's permissible.
Yeah, we, yeah.
So, at this point in time, it's September. So, the burden that is placed on Mr. Akers over in P.N.Z., who is, you know, supervises that department, is less at this time, and he can, he confirmed that in conversations, um, possibly with the mayor, whether he did or not. I, I know he confirmed that with me. Secondly, he's hired a part-time person that has greatly relieved the pressure on him as far as mowing and landscaping. And third, you know, we obviously have a disagreement of application of state law as it pertains to council members providing direct services to the city exclusively, so I would agree with, uh, Mr. Martin that we need to reevaluate, um, you know, the process, and I think that if he would consider amending his motion, I think tabling this and looking at the possibility of a resubmission of bids on January first is a more appropriate timeframe to properly study this, you know, issue.
We can...
I didn't set a date, so it, it's whenever the mayor decides it
Can we...
needs to be readres.
Yes, sir.
We can table it until, we can have a regularly scheduled work meeting in October, so we can hash it out, get, get it hashed out.
Still got budget to pass, and still got...
I know, I just... Uh, as far as the ordinance, we put them in the wrong order, Ms. Penny, should've had the bids first. Uh, as far as new business, okay, the motion on the floor is new business number three, which is the or, twenty twenty-four dash zero two, to table it until the next...
Until the mayor decides it needs to be brought up again, and he'll let an alderman know, and alderman know.
Okay, and table it until it's necessary to bring, until the mayor deems it necessary to bring it up again.
Correct.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Do a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote, please, Ms. Penny.
Thompson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, honestly, we should've had the bids first, Ms. Penny. Uh, didn't think about that. New business number four, bids for the pest control and landscaping. We have the bids for the pest... We have the bids for the pest control. Uh, Music's Pest Control was chosen. They was considering, you know, uh, to be the ones for the new pest contract for City Hall and the Street Department. You seen them there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, I guess I need a motion to accept. Need a motion to accept.
I move that we accept the pest control bid from, uh, Music Pest Control.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson to accept the pest control bid from Music's Pest Control, which is a, which is a one-year contract. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Penny.
Martin?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Now, on to the lawn services. We kind of got ahead of ourselves a little bit, but on to the lawn services, my recommendation at this time is to hold off until January 1st. Uh, what do we say, you know? None, none of the bids were accepted at this time, and we're gonna hold off till January 1st to
And, and, and-
to see if it's needed.
Resend the bids.
Yeah, and we'll redo, redo the bid process if needed. With the explanation being, at the time the bid was put out, we didn't know that we was gonna have an extra employee in the planning, P and Z department. With now having the extra employee, the, uh, the monies that was gonna be used to pay for the mowing contract was the monies that are being used there. And if we're gonna do the lawn care next year, we really need to sit down with the budget committee and find out if we have the budgetary monies available and a line item specifically-
And now you have a range that you know what you-
And, and a specific line item for that, and a range of what's to do.
Can I just say this?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Heather.
Just, just to be clear, a month ago, August, I asked, I asked you about me working for the city, if you were gonna get back with me. And I never got an answer on that, so I'm just, I just want to be clear that, you know, when I found out they were gonna do bids for the city, I started asking questions to be completely transparent. And if there's a law that tells me, as a city council member, I can't do any work for the city, that's the law, and I'm fine with that. I just haven't been presented any of that information, and everyone knew I was doing a closed bid and
Yeah.
no one has said anything, and so you just kind of, you know, so I want, I'm, I'm not, I appreciate the information, but it's like, let's get the information and know what I can and can't do, because if I can, I want to be sometimes in the running, because I know the kind of job I'll do for the city, but at the same time, to be transparent, so.
Yes. Yeah, and that's, that's my ultimate goal, is always be transparent. But that's, uh,
Ms. Heather, I had emailed the city a brief on that topic.
Okay.
And if that didn't make it to you, that's my fault, I apologize.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that I get it to you after this meeting and give you a copy of it.
That'd be great, thank you.
So that brings us to new business number five, which is Mr. Martin's phoning in of council members on regular city council meetings.
Please. Okay. We, we have it where council members that are not participating in being here at city halls are, are phoning it in. Not only if they're sick, but maybe if they're on vacation or something like that. There is no set plan, no set directive, no set rule. It just happens willy-nilly, and I would like to make the comment, I'd like the clerk to start marking everybody that's been called in or has called in, because I don't see it in law where we can do, where we can call in our council members or because that could mean everybody up here could have a phone sitting here and no councilman be here. That's, that could technically happen. So-
We need to, we need to sit down and say-
If, if there is a law on the books about council members phoning in, because I know the state, you have to be there to vote.
It very clearly says they cannot bid.
No, 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 we're, we're on-
But then there's an exception where they can.
No, we're on calling in-
Calling in.
Okay.
On the phone, and, and being a council member on the phone. So, that's, it's been happening since COVID. And when a council member has a serious illness and dedicated council member wants to participate, I got no problem with that, but I have a problem with there is no set way of how it's done. There's no set way of, like, let's say, myself, I have a tendency where I will not be a council member several months out of the year. I usually call the mayor and say, if he needs me, call me, but there should be some regulation, some rule that's set up to say, this is how it's gonna be done, because we can also get into a this side of the council gets it stacked up for a vote, and the other side isn't around to be able to vote. So, we have to have some sort of procedure for it, and usually a clerk or somebody she designates says, this is how it's done. This is how we're gonna call in, this is what's gonna be, so is that something that you can write up for us as an ordinance? Um, but do you see what I'm saying? There should be some sort of procedure that if I can't make it, I make it known to the clerk or to the mayor, and then there's a procedure that's followed in how we participate in the meeting, if it's legal for us to do that. Because there was Pandora's Box opened, uh- Right. But like I said, I still don't know if it's legal, because you go to Congress, you have to be there to vote.
I'll research it.
I, I'd appreciate that, and that's, that was my thing. I, I'm not against it, but there's gotta be some sort of procedure, so if somebody's not here-
You're just looking-
We, we have, and, and then it's, and it's not marked as being here, but it's marked as being on the phone, because it's different. Everybody that's sitting here can come up and talk to me afterwards. Whereas if you're on the phone, phone gets hung up. You know, so it, it, it takes away from the people that show up, and that's, that was my statement, and that's what I think we should have.
So I think Mr. Martin raises some valid points. And I think if we look back on the municipal league, um, there was an allowance for, as he so appropriately pointed out, that when COVID began and we got shut down virtually, we still had to conduct the business of, of the city as did municipalities all across the state. However, when COVID subsided, if my memory serves me right, and I don't guarantee it's perfect, but I believe that the municipal league came back and said, no longer are we going to allow that uh, voting by phone or participating by phone. And so I think that we need to go back and look at that, as he's suggesting. And if there are circumstances where, you know, we did, we did have some critical business to address, and if that's the case, what is the process in which we'd be compliant within the municipal league guidelines? So I think, I think, you know, if we go back and look, if you look back at the municipal league instructions for, that was put out to the cities, I think you're gonna see an update when they started allowing that process, and then when they ceased allowing that process, and to see if whether or not there is an exception to handle the circumstances, because we still have to conduct the business of the city. So we can't just show up and say, well, we don't have a quorum, so we can't address critical things. So I think Mr. Martin raises some very valid points.
Yeah, we can get with that. I mean, I, I understand, there needs to be a, there needs to be a SOP, a standard operating procedure of what's allowed and what's not, to make sure we follow all state and federal laws.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Martin stated that to let the clerk know, first of all, when I do do my minutes, I do make sure that I put in there whether they're by phone or not, so, and I keep attendance. So if you're not here, because we do have a resolution or something that says you have to attend so many, or you can be asked to step down. The other thing that I need to stress is that your emails that you get every month that says, here's your meeting, please let me know if you're not gonna be here, so I don't have to put up computers. I hear from two of you. I set up everything, and then when I walk in here or I see the mayor before I leave, that's when I find out, oh, they're not gonna be here, they're not gonna be here, and I just spent all the time doing that. So if it's gonna come to me, make sure you give your answers to me, not to someone else to hand to me. Email me back, answer my emails, then we'll be on the same page.
And you, you cannot create a resolution to make an elected official step down.
I didn't do it.
No, the only way an elected official can, can be removed is by thems, themselves removing them, giving a letter of resignation, or, um, doing something illegal to, to get them removed. The council cannot take an elected official off council once they're put on council.
Said move?
Correct?
Yeah.
You're not listening hard enough. I said, the council has no authority in removing an elected official for attendance.
It's not easy to do, but there's a procedure if there's malfeasance for-
Right, malfeasance or non-feasance of office, correct?
Yeah.
One of those two things have to be produced. So, but a resolution doesn't, but a resolution doesn't cut it, it has to be an ordinance.
It's involved.
Okay.
Mr. Mar, Councilman Martin?
Yes.
This did happen with Andrew Hefley, because he had missed so many of them.
Uh, I, I was not informed of that. I heard he was moving someplace else, and that's why he resigned.
That was, that was part of it, but it was all there, but there is a resolution, and I'll pull that up and send it to the attorney.
Well, the, the resolution should be struck from the books, because it's not legal. Because a resolution is not something that can be enforced. A resolution is the will of the council at that particular moment in time, correct?
A resolution is a light thing to usually amend an ordinance or, you know, and-
But it's, it's the will of the council at that particular moment in time.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good way for it.
Thank you.
Moving on. We're gonna do the comments from the, comments and questions about city. I got one signed up. Is it Brent? Brent and Jill Hunstead? There you go. You wanna approach the podium here and just state your name and address for the record and, and whatever you got?
My name's Brent Hunstead.
Could you please come, well, that way it's recorded. That way the recorder don't pick- Uh-oh, okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, the recorder don't pick up real good unless you speak into the mic.
Okay. Uh, well, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Brent Hunstead, uh, new resident here in Cherokee Village, living at 47 Namioke Drive, and was interested in the situation of the roads. I was more interested in just getting a copy of the financial report pertaining to how that's levied, how the funds are collected, how they're spent. Um, I, there's no argument, the roads are not in that great a shape, and I'd like to be an active participate, uh, participant in getting to some sort of forward progress in better managing our road situation.
We had a road and street committee, and I don't know if it exists anymore, but there's committees for just about every other department, so-
I've heard various stories on whether they exist or not, so. I mean, I'm new, this is my first meeting, I just came as, on a fact-finding mission tonight. Didn't mean to interrupt and say hi to everybody, but thanks, darling. Did you wanna? Did you wanna?
Yeah.
What were you thinking we were gonna talk about tonight?
Whatever you want to.
What, what was it on for? I don't remember an email or anything.
No, no, somebody signed up.
Oh, we just thought that-
Oh, I thought that was an attendance thing.
Oh.
Nobody was thinking, okay, sorry, people.
Our, our financials are listed online for any citizen to pull up at any time.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And how do I find out about the road committee?
Uh-
I'll talk to the mayor.
Yeah, right now, right now, because of lack of participation, the, the road committee that was there when I come into office wasn't, wasn't, uh, let's just say, lack of participation, it was kind of dissolved at the moment.
Okay, great, well, that's unfortunate, but we can chat more about it later.
Do you have any background in roads?
Pardon me?
Do you have any background in it?
Uh, yeah, I've been in property management for years and done many a reserve study on the viability and u- useful remaining lifespan of all kinds of infrastructure, so have a little bit of experience in that regard. But we can talk about that more later.
Yeah, just give me a call, we'll schedule a meeting.
Okay, all right, thanks. Appreciate the time.
That's all right. And before we adjourn, Ms. Pam, are you still there? Are you still there, Ms. Pam? Hey, uh, I heard congratulations on receiving the E. Wilson, uh-
Green.
Green Award this year. So congratulations, Ms. Pam.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a prestigious award for volunteerism in the county, so she, that's a, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
I didn't ask to speak, but y'all said some things I wanted to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, my name's Tristan Causey, I live at, uh, 13 Omaha Drive. I've been coming to these meetings for a few months, and, um, I really thought that we were gonna get somewhere with the landscaping and whatnot. And, uh, I'm just a little confused. A, I guess we need to look into it. Um, what the problem is with a volunteer council person having a contract to work for the city. Again, that's a legal thing, doesn't have to be answered. Um, B, I'm not real sure why we were soliciting bids for this at the same time that we were hiring a person to do it. That seems kind of like a double negative there, but that's okay, it happened. Um, I know that we've had some, or at least I've heard that we've had some part-time employees in the past, and maybe they haven't worked out, so this sounds like it might end up being another Band-Aid. And I'm just hoping that maybe we could put some emphasis on figuring it out instead of just putting it off, putting it off, because to be honest with you, I thought we were making great progress with getting somewhere these last couple of months, talking about it, and then Councilwoman Harrison went through all the work of putting in the bid, and I think we had a couple of other bids, but I guess they weren't good enough. Uh, sorry, I'm rambling here. Uh, everybody's just staring at me, it feels kinda, uh, this is new. I just think that it would be great if we could maybe look into this a little further, because we do have someone that's willing to put forth the, I guess cares enough to, to do something for this community in regards to the terrible problem we've had with all of the trees and landscaping and whatnot. And, uh, yeah, I guess the main thing is just what was the problem with a volunteer uh, council person having a contract with the city if they're not being paid by the city? Doesn't seem like there's really a conflict there. That's all I got?
All right.
Well, just, just to let you know, um, eight years ago, I wanted to work for the city, and I was a council person, I think it was eight years ago. And I couldn't apply for a job, because I was a council person. And that seems really backwards, and I wanted to work for the Road and Street Department. Wouldn't let me, wouldn't even let me apply. So-
That's a little bit different. That's a direct job, whereas she would be a contractor, if I'm not mistaken, that would be just a little bit different.
I, I'm just saying, that's out there and that happened, so I don't know what the state law says, but that should be looked into. Um, it could also be a problem with who's gonna be her boss then. She's a private contractor, but somebody's gotta sit over the top of her. And is there gonna be conflict there too? So, I don't know.
We'll find out.
Yeah, just something that, I just, I heard, you know, we should put it off until, I know you said January 1st, Mayor, I think that's great. Um, I just was hearing, you know, put it off until it's deemed necessary. I think it's something that we should probably keep on the forefront, because it's been necessary for a while, we just got lucky and got a part-time employee to maybe, you know, help out a little bit here. That's all I got. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. The any council member got any council business to come before?
I do, and I apologize, I, um, maybe somebody else here will know the exact dates if I'm wrong in saying this, but if I'm not mistaken, um, and Paul might know if he's still here, Village Pride is doing the cleanup uh, October 5th. So that'll be, start off.
Oops.
I'm bouncing it around. Uh, October 5th, meet at King Road's office for donuts, sign up, get your vest and all that. That's the Village Pride cleanup, nine to 12, I believe, and then lunch is also provided in the parking lot. And I talked to Charlie Akers, and there's also a city they're opening, is that October 9th?
I thought it was the 12th. Was it the 12th on a Saturday?
Is it the weekend after the 12th?
The drop-off? I think that's the 7th.
7th, see, we got a bunch of-
No, I'm sorry.
It's a Saturday, it's a Saturday from nine to three that you can bring-
It's the 12th.
It'll be the 12th.
October 12th, um, you can bring up to two trailer loads there- October 12th, um, you can bring up to two trailer loads, there's, uh, it's on the website, right, Penny, because it says what you can and can't bring. I just, those dates weren't on here, so I just wanted to mention that Village Pride cleanup, October 5th, a city trash where you can take your trash, where are you seeing? Oh, 12, okay, thank you. Yeah, October 12th, okay. Um, just wanna let the community know about that.
Thank you, Ms. Heather, I didn't see, button on my paper, I get, I get off.
I'm, I'm assuming it's on the website, I just, you know.
It is.
For those listening, or, you know, whatever, so.
No print, no tires.
And October 5th is the vol, you know, it's cleaning up the streets, uh, a trash pickup day for the whole village.
Mayor, may I be recognized to speak? If I may, I just wanna, I can just read this partic, this statute here, just read directly out of the municipal code. That way, everybody understands exactly what's happening.
What's the year of the book?
With the service, the lawn services.
What's the year of the book?
"No alderman, councilmember, official, or municipal employee shall be interested directly or indirectly in the profits of any contract for furnishing supplies, equipment, or services to the municipality, unless the governing body of a city has enacted an ordinance specifically permitting aldermen, councilmembers, officials, or municipal employees to conduct business within the city and prescribing the extent of that authority." So, you have, uh, you know, real clear, but it's not allowed unless the city allows it. And so, that's, uh, and then we, we fashioned that resolution in accordance with the statute, and just wanted to kinda lay that out there, so everybody had full knowledge of what we're dealing with.
Thank you, Ms. Jerry.
And what year is that book?
This is, it's current. This book might not be current, but that statute, I just read this, what's on the books today.
Any, any, anything from the crowd?
Anybody has any questions, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. That was it, that was all.
Yeah, I know, right, it's a little fuzzy, but we make it real clear when we read that book.
Well, being, uh.
Ready?
No more business to come before the city council, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, adjourned, seconded by Mr. Thompson and Ms. Tatum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Pam.
Sorry about the phone, we've been air buzzing.
Oh, it's all right. Man, got my allergies going so bad today, my head's so fuzzy.
We need a good time to get what we need over, we need an ordinance.